I'm going to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender is absent.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsani is absent. Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 11 members present.
We have a quorum present. Councilmember Worsani will not be joining us. He is attending to his new baby and wife, and so we offer them our congratulations and hope to see him back soon. The next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Any changes or doesn't look like it? I guess I've got unfinished business, but that's on there already. So any further additions or any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting in the adjourned session of July 21st, 2017.
So moved?
Second.
Minutes have been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion on the referrals? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first to report is the Community Development Regulatory Services Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services is bringing 14 items forward for approval this morning. We noted the items in committee of the whole. I'll just note the major items include item number one, which is a bond issuance for an affordable housing project at 1500 Nicollet Avenue. Item number five, which is a whole series of land sales under the Minneapolis Homes Development Assistance Program. Item six, which is some changes in our Business Made Simple temporary alcohol licenses for events ordinance, and a whole list of operating agreements and business license conditions for a variety of businesses listed below. With that, I'll move items one through 14 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development and Regulatory Services report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Elections and Rules Committee report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one item on the agenda for today, which is adding to the number of precincts we have for the municipal election in 2017. I move that item.
Councilmember Frye has moved the Elections Committee report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward essentially one item, but in three parts. It has to do with the tobacco sales ordinance. The committee is bringing forward with unanimous recommendation passage of an ordinance amending Title 13, Chapter 281, dealing with tobacco sales. It would restrict the sales of all flavored tobacco products to tobacco product shops. There was an amendment at the committee that also would include liquor stores to allow them to sell the menthol, mint, and wintergreen flavored products. We also passed a staff direction directing staff to begin enforcement of this new part of the ordinance no earlier than August 1st, 2018. And we also directed the city coordinator's office to work with CPED and also the Health Department to find ways to support convenience stores and corner stores in making a successful transition to complying with the new provisions. I will move all three of those items. I know there is an amendment, so we'll pause to discuss it and consider amendments.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the three items under tobacco sales ordinance, and I do have an amendment that has been distributed. It's a yellow underline, so I would move to include language in the ordinance to say that any tobacco product that contains a taste of aroma or aroma of menthol, mint, or wintergreen shall not be considered a flavored tobacco product for these purposes of, for the purposes of this definition until August 1, 2018. All this does is clarify that this remains a legal product for this year of not enforcing the ordinance, so gives people time to be able to adjust their business plan for that year and continue to be able to sell what is a legal product until that date. So I would ask for a second.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Gordon?
I think this is a reasonable amendment, and I'm supportive of it. This basically takes the staff direction, and it codifies it and makes it clearer. And I actually think it's easier and simpler if we just say it's still legal and make sure that everybody understands that, so I'm supportive of this.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Then on the main motion, Councilmember Gordon?
Well, I think we did have a lot of discussion on it. I guess I could speak to it a little bit. I do want to admit that for those of you who think this was a fantastic and wonderful and great idea, it wasn't really my idea. This is something that came to me from community members and people with concerns. They vetted them well with health professionals, including our Health Department staff, and it was something that we thought we should move forward on to help protect the future health and well-being of the residents of Minneapolis, particularly our youth, who are finding this as a gateway into nicotine addiction. And I think it's pretty clear to everybody now, unlike back in the '60s or '70s or even the '80s, I forget when all the deniers went away, but it's very clear that tobacco is deadly. It's one of the leading causes of death in our city. Certainly, those would be considered preventable. So I was happy to work on this. I think every time something came up and I said I need reassurance from the community that this is supported, there was organizing and community support. I don't know how long the list of organizations that are endorsing and supporting this is at this point because it keeps growing and growing. I'm sure there's over 50 organizations that are officially signed on. We've gotten letters from state representatives from the legislature and others. We heard testimony from physicians and health professionals, all supporting this move. I think it's the right thing for us to do. Saying that, though, doesn't mean necessarily that we have 100% agreement on this. During the public testimony, I think we heard from some 70 to 80 different people, and well, 50 or so were very supportive. We did hear from some people who were very concerned about what might happen to their businesses and what would happen with the sales. Things get very confusing because the sales numbers look so high, and they are high, but a lot of that sales, in fact, I think it's, my estimate is 92% of those don't stay with the stores. They don't stay in the local neighborhood. That's money that goes to the tobacco industry and also to government primarily. So I think that there's ways to analyze and look at that. And if you look at the staff directions and the amendments that we made, clearly that was thinking of, well, how can we make this better and easier for the businesses out there? I think it's really important for all the people who support this move throughout the city to go to your convenience and corner stores, shop there, talk to them about this, thank them for trying to find ways to make this work, and consider them partners, as they have been in the past, to prevent tobacco products from getting in the hands of young people so that they don't get addicted. And I think we're probably, in the end of this, it's my hope and expectation that we'll look back three or four years from now and we'll say, boy, not a single convenience store closed, and look, they're thriving in our neighborhood, because absolutely those stores do serve our communities and our neighborhoods in many wonderful and positive ways. And I don't want anything about this ordinance to indicate that I believe anything other than that, and we should support our corner and convenience stores and uplift them through this process. Thank you.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I actually struggled with this vote quite a bit, and I just came to this recently, within the last day. I will not be joining some of my colleagues in supporting the underlying ordinance here restricting the sale of menthol tobacco products. Before I go into reasons for not supporting the ordinance, I have two quick comments. You know, I find it rather odd to be making such an important policy decision so close to the elections, and it's as if we'd rather make hasty policy than good policy. And, you know, I think that sometimes when we are forced to face our fears with regards to the electorate, you know, it makes for bad policy, but, you know, I'm not going to take a vote based on fear. Two, I find it disturbing that this vote couldn't wait until an economic impact study was completed. The anti-tobacco lobby refused to participate in a study, and I think it's one of the, I think that if one's position is so righteous, participation in the study should have been given. The fact that it wasn't makes me wonder what new information will be found. That being said, I just want to say my opposition to this well-meaning measure is rooted in several things. First and foremost, I just want to say it's undisputed that smoking is bad, although I'm not an anti-tobacco control activist, I helped to lead the fight to restrict flavored tobacco products along with Councilmember Gordon, because there is a clear, there is clearly no use for these other than to hook children on tobacco. The compelling government reason then for restricting flavored tobacco was underage access and use. With this specific ordinance, underage access is not the compelling government reason. The case, at least from my perspective, wasn't made with regards to that. I think that this ordinance unfairly targets African-Americans. Over 80% of African-American adults who smoke, smoke menthol cigarettes. That is true. But this is about the ability of adults to do something which is bad for them but which is otherwise entirely legal. I cannot in good conscience tell a full-grown adult in Ward 5 that they have to go through hoops and extra trouble to get a product which other residents in other parts of the city will be able to get without any further hassle. There is an inherent unfairness in that. There are several others that concern, other things that concern me about this ordinance. There are no tobacco stores in North Minneapolis, further exacerbating the impacts of this unfairly impactful policy. But I do have to say, I do support the amendment to allow sales at liquor stores, and while that allows for a few places where one can purchase menthol tobacco in North Minneapolis, it's government force being used to restrict the legal choices of adults inequitably across the city. The other point I want to make is I'm concerned about the ways this policy would create further police-citizen interactions. I cannot dictate policy from here, but I think it is worth saying that cops shouldn't spend any time pursuing the sale of black-market menthol cigarettes. Finally, I was a little bit disturbed by this, but I do have to say that someone said to me that this vote is a vote on whether I support life or death. I have to be clear, I'm not a smoker. I've co-authored an anti-tobacco ordinance in the past, but I don't believe that this is a vote with regard to supporting life or death, and I see it differently, and I will continue to remain consistent on this, and I will say that I'm pro-choice on this. Thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to briefly speak to the item I was happy to co-author with Councilmember Gordon. As he stated, this was really in response to a call from a huge number of community members and organizations, and I wanted to particularly thank a couple of our state leaders, Jeff Hayden and Rena Moran, who are really, have been leading on this issue for a long time and were really involved in helping with the community conversation. And then I really wanted to particularly thank the young people who got involved in this. This ordinance is for you, and it is yours, and I got a chance to talk with many of you, and you are the future leaders of our city. I know you will be back to City Hall. We've already talked about things that you want to do, and I can't wait to work with you on those, so thank you so much for your leadership and the strong voices you've made a difference in your city today. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I am going to join my colleague, Councilmember Yang, and not support this today, but I do, I want to say I appreciate the change that was made to allow menthol to be sold in liquor stores where people have to be 21 to be able to purchase anything or, you know, be alone in a liquor store. That helped the situation in North Minneapolis, where essentially this ordinance, as proposed originally, would not allow a menthol cigarette to be sold to anyone because we have no tobacco stores in North Minneapolis. And when I point that out, people are very quick to say, well, it's a business opportunity. And yes, it may be, but it could have been a business opportunity when the flavors were sent to the tobacco stores, and nobody has decided to open up a tobacco store in North Minneapolis. And I guess I would say that to people, it's really hard to open a business in North Minneapolis. It's hard when people are shooting your windows out, like happened twice at Hawthorne Crossings this week. It's hard when people are getting robbed. It's hard when people are getting beat up in the stores, the owners of these stores. So it's a really challenging business environment, so I think it's very casual to say this is a business opportunity. It's a challenging business environment in this community. And I also see this as government picking winners and losers as to what kind of businesses succeed in a community, when we have already done things challenging to some of these corner stores, like the requirement for healthy foods, which is, you know, is a wonderful thing, but also provides a challenge for those stores that we don't do to any other business in this community. So I just find it really, really hard to see how we have made youth access to menthol less available by this. I would have rather seen us deal quickly with raising the age of buying, being able to buy tobacco, period, to 21. That would have made much more sense to me, much more sense. But for some reason, I guess because there was this groundswell of community activity around this, the menthol ban came first. I just, again, think this is really challenging for a business environment in our city, in an area that's really challenged, that's very targeted at North Minneapolis in particular, and I just think that's really unfortunate. I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Yang. I don't like smoking either. Nobody likes smoking. Smoking has, is a awful habit. People have, through activities like you, young people have done in the advocates, smoking has declined, you know? I tell my kids, when you used to watch TV in the 1950s and '60s, the guy that was giving the CBS Evening News that had a cigarette while he was giving the news out, those days are done. Those days are done, and the percentage of smokers continues to decline. That is a good thing. That is a really good thing. And I support efforts to continue to see that number decline, but I really have challenges when we are taking, who are really hurting in this, in this ordinance are adults that are basically addicted to cigarettes, to menthol cigarettes in our community. And we wouldn't treat any other addict in this way by saying you can't purchase a legal product, and that's what we're doing here. It's going to be helpful in perhaps sowing down people's interest in beginning smoking, I guess, but I just don't see that it has the effect that a 21 ban would have, a 21-age implementation would have, and I find it really, again, targeting a particular community, and that is really most unfortunate, so I won't be supporting this today. Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll on the ordinance.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
No.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
No.
There are 10 ayes and 2 nays.
That ordinance is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee report. Any, I'm sorry, that chair, that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we have seven items for approval. The first item is the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education Training Academy reimbursement for the cadet training. Second item is a contract amendment with Delta WRX LLC for Police Information System Robot Support. Third item is the 2017 Community Engagement Grant from Target to the Minneapolis Police Department, Community Engagement Coordination. Fourth item is a grant application to the United States Department of Justice for the 2017 Community Oriented Policing Services Parent Grant. Fifth item is a contract with Minneapolis Public Schools for School Resource Officers. Sixth item is a contract with Horstman, Inc. for Patrol Force Boarding Services. And the seventh item is an audit of the Minneapolis Police Department's mobile and body-warm video recording equipment programs, and with that, I will move all items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? And I've lost my computer screen here, so if there are, I'm going to...
There's nobody.
Nobody? Okay, all right. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee forwards 12 items today. Item one is the snow and ice removal from public sidewalk assessments. Item two is a regulation on small cell wireless facilities on city-owned infrastructure. There's an adjustment made to accommodate state law that was passed this year. Item three is the agreement with Metro Transit for snow storage. Item four is the water utility easement agreement with Millen Corporation for hydrant location. Item five is an agreement with the city of St. Paul for Water Connection Point. Item six is an agreement with Lacra Technologies for advanced meter infrastructure purchase and implementation. Item seven is the cooperative agreement with Hennepin County and Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for Traffic Signal Replacement and Pedestrian Improvement Project. Item eight is the cooperative construction agreement with Hennepin County for I-35W Lake Street Transit Access Project. Item nine is the Minneapolis Street Lighting Plan. It's an amendment to include 42nd Avenue North for the location listed, and this was a sort of a pilot to see how we could modify our overall citywide plan moving forward. Item 10 is the South Hay Area Resurfacing Project, postponed resurfacing for Russell Queen and 12th Avenue. Item 11 is the sidewalk repair and replacement, removal of the address listed. And the final item is a bid for structural lining water in Main, and that's accepting the bid, the most responsive bid for that application. Madam President, I move all items as submitted.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Ways and Means Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means will bring forward six items today for your consideration. The first is a legal settlement. Item number two is accepting the sole bid from Pro-Tec Design for the Convention Center Parking Ramp Intercom System. We also have a lease with Sprint for cellular equipment on Kenwood Water Tower. Item number four is a contract amendment with Classic Space for specialized equipment storage. Item five is the Minneapolis Grain Exchange for Public Works Office-Based Lease Agreement, and the final item is a memorandum of understanding with Hennepin County for exchange of internal audit services. Move all six items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Committee report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four items from zoning and planning. Item number one is granting an appeal for a variance at 4415 Fremont Avenue South related to a detached garage. Item number two is denying an appeal at 2863 East Lake of the Isles Parkway. That was about a steep slope for a new home there. Item number three is approving a rezoning for a project at 15th and Nicollet Avenue. This is the one that was on the CDERS agenda. And item number four is passage of an ordinance amending our zoning code related to yard and setback requirements in non-residential zoning districts. I'll move items one through four.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the reports of special committees. The first is the Executive Committee, and as vice chair of that committee, I will move the item that came out of the Executive Committee unanimously, which is the appointment of the police, chief of police, receiving and filing the nomination of the, by the Executive Committee of Madera Aradondo, to the appointed position of chief of police in the city of Minneapolis for term ending January 7, 2019, and then referring the appointment to the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee for a public hearing to be held August 9, 2017. There a second on that?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
And the final item is a bid for structural lining water in Maine, and that's accepting the bid, the most responsive bid for that application. Madam President, I move all items as submitted.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Notice of Ordinance Introductions, and the first is that councilmember Bender gives notice of intent to introduce at the next meeting of the City Council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to land use application fees, regulations affecting uses, uses subject to site plan review, and standards governing changes to approved applications. That notice is given. The second item is councilmember Reich giving notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the City Council the ordinance, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to lawful gambling, amending the conditions for the conduct of lawful gambling licensure. That notice is given. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar. The first is a motion by councilmember Goodman to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee amending regulations related to parking garages. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by councilmember Goodman and Frye to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to streets and sidewalks, downtown improvement district, for first reading and referral to the Transportation and Public Works Committee re-adopting the ordinance to renew the downtown business improvement special service district, the DID, for an additional five-year period. That requires unanimous consent. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we have unanimous consent. Introduced. Next, we have resolutions, and the first is a resolution of 2017 Cancer Legal Care Day honorary resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have the 2017 Lymphoma Awareness Day honorary resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the 2017 Purple Ride Stride Minnesota Pancreatic Cancer Event honorary resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a 2017 Farmer's Market Week honorary resolution, passage of a resolution declaring August 6th through 12th to be Farmer's Market Week in the City of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. We have unfinished business next, and the first is an easement agreement for sanitary sewer improvements. And I'm wondering, councilmember Reich, is this from TPW? I can't remember, actually. Sanitary sewer improvements? Someone?
Yeah, it was forwarded from the committee.
It moved forward?
So you're moving it forward, then? Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Reich moves forward the unfinished business easement agreements for sanitary sewer improvements. We need a roll call on that. Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That item is adopted. And next, we have an interim use permit, and that is a permit allowing temporary concrete, asphalt, and rock-crushing facility at the Upper Harbor. This is not uncontroversial, and so we are, in front of you, are under unfinished business number two, recommendations from our pollution, or from our environmental staff for the concerns that have been identified. This interim use permit will expire December 31st, 2017, so it's very short-term, and no future permits will be issued. The interim use approval can be modified or canceled if excessive noise, odors, or dust occur, and also the dust will be prevented in conjunction with our ordinances and then some additional dust suppression measures. And also, air particulate monitoring will happen on the site. And the noise must be in compliance with the Chapter 389, the Code of Ordinances. Hours of operation are delineated, and then a sign with additional information about how to contact the company that will be on-site, and verification that the material sources, which are from our paving projects, actually, this saves, this particular initiative in allowing of this use saves us costs in construction of our streets. Verification that material sources that are crushed are to be lead-free and do not contain asbestos. So I will move this addition to the interim use permit. Is there a second on this? Moved and seconded, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.